This conference will now be recorded.
Excellent. Okay, welcome to the Alpena City Council meeting of June 15th, 2020. Call the order, please.
Councilmember Hess?
Councilwoman Hess here.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell here.
Councilmember Noak is excused. And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor Walagora here. Please ready for the pledge. Collegiate flag through the flag. United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation.
Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minute, approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Councilman Mitchell support.
Clerk Soight calling the rule. Councilmember Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor Walagora, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, approval of the minutes from regular session of June 1st, 2020. Any changes, issues with minutes?
No.
None.
Right, hearing done. Those are approved. Now, we're at the question for citizens appearing before council on agenda. Non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's meeting that you're allowed to address council. I'll give everyone that has joined us a brief opportunity to, to unmute your mic and, comment if you would like. All right, thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $317,388.63. B is the Save Alpena application for medical marijuana facilities. C is a Nemco planning services contract. And D is a budget amendment request for fiscal year 1920. Decreased transfer from the general fund to the Marina Fund.
Mayor Protem Johnson, I move we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
Clerk Soight calling the rule for the motion. Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Walagora, aye.
And Councilmember Hess?
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we are down to 11, which is the report of officers. Topic is the attorney's fees for water and sewer litigation.
Mayor Walagora and members of council, did you get the updated version of the billing?
I did.
Yes.
Yeah, it changed slightly. It reduced just a small amount. I had a couple of items on there that weren't appropriate to bill for. This is my request for council to consider payment of the outstanding bill. If you look at the bill itself, it represents a period of time from July of 18 through the end of March of the year 20. So it represents a 21-month period. There's 146 billed hours during that time. So it amounts to about seven hours per month. There were really four main periods of time that there's significant hours billed in. One was the initial period of July and August of 2018, when the city vigorously fought the entry of a judgment in the circuit court here in Alpena. We were unsuccessful at that point and a judgment was entered. And that resulted in an appeal by not only the township, but also the city. The second main period of time represents December of 18 and January of 19. Council may recall that the Court of Appeals ordered us into its court ordered mediation program. We mediated with David Meyer from Saginaw, who was an expert in water sewer litigation. And although we did not reach a conclusion to that, we did spend a fair amount of time on it. The next period of billing of any substances is March, April, and May of 2019, which required a significant period of time to not only file our brief, but also to respond to the township brief. And then also file a reply brief to the township's reply to our brief. As councils aware, we were successful in terms of overturning the judgment that was entered in the circuit court. The last period of time was essentially March of this year that required getting prepared for the oral arguments and attending in Lansing for the oral arguments. Council may also recall that at one point in time, we had outside council. We had contracted with James Young, who kept a office presence over on the west side of the state in the Traverse City Antrim area. But subsequent to him helping us with this matter, he started spending most of his time primarily out in Oregon in the state, or in the state of Oregon, excuse me, in Portland. And so what occurred over time is that the preparation of the case for trial and the overwhelming majority of the discovery, including the depositions, fell to me and I basically took over primary responsibility for handling the case. I think the amount that I billed is fair and appropriate. I'm asking council to consider approving it. And if there are any specific questions about the bill or anything related to the lawsuit, I would be more than willing to answer those.
Hi Bill, Mayor Walagora. I just had just maybe one thing for clarification for anyone that might be, that might question the fact that you're on a salary retainer for the city. How do you decipher between what's a common, maybe a common duty of your being the attorney for the city and this case specifically? Is there a difference or is everything billed separately for the water and sewer?
Everything has been billed separately for water and sewer. Once I primarily took over handling the case, the may recall that there were, early on in the years 12, 13, 14, when we were trying to reach a conclusion before we entered into the lawsuit. All of that time was considered regular time because there was not a separate lawsuit. That was just mainly trying to negotiate or renegotiate either a new agreement or to make some modifications to the existing agreement. Obviously, we were never able to get there and ultimately it resulted in the city filing a lawsuit against the township. And obviously, you also know that's still going on. I consider this particular work, specialized work that's outside the scope of a normal duty of a city attorney, not only here, but across the state. Although there are obviously other water sewer disputes that have ended up in not only circuit courts, but the Court of Appeals and a few that have even made their way to the Michigan Supreme Court. It's not something that the average city attorney would be well qualified to perform, at least initially. I spent a lot of time not only educating myself, but also learning probably more about water and sewer than I ever wanted to learn. And obviously, this litigation has been pretty complex and it's been pretty litigious. We had many motions in the trial court. We've had a few motions in the Court of Appeals and, you know, ultimately, we were successful. But I consider it outside the scope of my normal duties. I do keep a log of my regular hours. And if council wanted me to present that before it made a decision on this, I would have no problem with doing that. I know in the past Greg did ask me to do that and I don't have a problem doing that if council wishes me to do that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill, for that explanation. Appreciate it. I don't necessarily need to see your normal hours at this point. So unless someone else has a question for Bill, I'd entertain a motion to approve his fees as written.
I have no questions and I can make a motion if no one else does. This is Mayor Protem Johnson. I move that we pay city attorney from the period of 7/1/2018 to 3/31/2020 for 146 hours at a total cost of $32,120.
Councilwoman Hess, support.
Clerk Soight calling role for the motion. Councilmember Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor Walagora, aye.
Councilmember Hess?
Hess, yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hey, thank you. Next up, under unfinished business, we have the assessor's contract. I believe there were some changes made since our last meeting. Some clarification.
I guess I'll handle this. And Bill, if you don't mind highlighting some of the changes that you made, I'll just point out that this is, this contract is in line with the discussion that we had at the last council meeting. There is a slightly modified fee schedule than what we talked about. So it maintains that just under $85,000 for the first two years. And then, I'm trying to scroll to the part of the contract. And then I believe it goes up to the, to a bit higher tier for year three. And then there are three one-year renewals if needed in that. So three-year contract with three one-year renewals. And so with that, Bill, Pfeiffer, I'll hand it off to you to discuss the changes, other changes.
Yeah, there were, you know, a few minor stylistic changes in terms of, basically just cleaning up some language that needed to be a little bit more specific. But the main changes are, as noted by Rachel, the first three years are scheduled, year one and year two at the same rate, year three at a slightly increased rate. The three one-year renewals will not kick in unless the parties can mutually agree upon a rate. This does include ordinary travel expenses as well. So whenever Allen has to come to the city from Roger City, there's no additional cost for that. If there was something irregular that required him to travel somewhere else, that would be taken up. There were a couple of additional things added primarily under item number 26 regarding termination. You may recall in the previous contract, there was a specific buyout provision. There's also an hourly fee in here for Allen for any full Michigan tax tribunal work. So if we go to a full hearing in Lansing, he would receive some extra compensation for not only preparation for that, but also giving testimony. We did take out the provision about providing specific, specific city hours. I think the previous contract had a certain number of hours that city staff would help perform. Allen's basically going to take over those responsibilities himself. He is required to conduct office hours as well. You may already be familiar with the fact that we have a dedicated phone line that rings directly to his office in Roger City. He has been more than responsive to calls. There were a couple of other things, you know, hold harmless clause, document delivery clause that was new. This does require him to keep professional liability insurance. Also, commercial general liability insurance as well, workers' comp. All those costs are part of his costs and those are all included in terms of that overall contract rate. So this is consistent with what we believe was discussed at the last meeting. Like I said, there were a few extra changes and a few extra terms primarily in number 26. But unless there are any other specific questions, it's my understanding that Allen was agreeable to the terms and conditions. So if the council is as well, then we'll get Allen to sign it and we'll have him on board for the next three years for sure and then maybe longer.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill and Rachel. What I'll do is just because of the complexity and there were some questions and comments before, I'll just go around the table really quick just to make sure that no one has any specific questions. So I'll start with Danny Mitchell. Do you have any issues with the contract, sir?
No issues with the contract here.
Okay, thank you. And Amber Hess, any issues?
Hess here, no, no issues. I think it's pretty comprehensive and it looks like it covers all the avenues that I had a question about.
Okay, and thank you. And Mayor Protem Johnson, any issues?
No issues as well, thank you.
Okay, I do not either. So if someone wants to make a motion to approve this contract, we'll move forward.
Councilman Mitchell moves to approve the assessor's contract as written.
Mayor Protem, second.
Clerk Soight calling the motion for the rule. Or calling the rule for the motion. Mayor Walagora, you guys knew what I meant.
You did. Mayor Walagora, aye.
Councilmember Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next up is new business. A is the contract modification, 2019 CIP Phase Two. Average Solinger, is that your topic, sir?
Beauty, this Rich Solinger, city engineer. After we completed the CIP and the budget process, we discovered this last weekend that the alley between McKinley and Fair, extending parallel to Washington Avenue, has deteriorated more than anticipated. The original intent was for this alley to be repaired in next fiscal year. Over the past weekend, though, a portion of that existence sanctuary may collapsed and required emergency repairs. When Suez attempted to camera the main to evaluate the condition of the rest of the sanitary sewer, they were unable to since the main being underwater within the first few feet, causing a surcharge in the line. This main has been on the ongoing maintenance issue for several years, requiring the line be cleaned on an accelerated basis. As part of the sanitary sewer reconstruction, the intent was to pave the alley because of ongoing maintenance demands to the DPW caused by the number of homes which utilize this alley as access to their parking areas, as well as the need for access to the sanitary manholes. Due to the collapse and subsequent discovery of the surcharge, we feel this main needs to be reconstructed as soon as possible. The current budget includes funds to replace the sanitary sewer in another alley mortared by Beach Cedar and Miller in the amount of $105,100. As my recommendation, the city engineer to reallocate these funds to the McKinley Fair Alley at this time and subsequently delay the Beach Cedar Miller Alley until next fiscal year, basically flip-flopping these two projects. Currently, we have an open contract for the 2019 CIP Phase Two with MacArthur Construction. This project is substantially complete and expected to come in under the contract amount. The contract modification can be issued to this contractor or to this contract for this alley repair, expediting the project so repairs can be completed quickly. Adrian MacArthur of MacArthur Construction provided the unit prices enclosed. These vary a little bit from our existing contract only because of the width of that alley. There's basically no swing room in there for the excavator, but he does need that big excavator in there to work. But they are comparable to those prices. Adequate funds for this project are available between the budget of $105,100 for alley repairs and the under run anticipated in the 2019 CIP Phase Two project. As my recommendation, the city engineer to execute a contract modification with MacArthur Construction for the provided unit price, for the provided unit prices totaling $124,925 for the sanitary sewer reconstruction in the alley between McKinley and Fair Street, extended parallel to Washington. And that would also include the paving of the alley.
Excellent, thank you, Rich. My only question would be if we approve the contract modification to change the work, do we also need to, do we also need to approve a budget amendment attached to that separately? Or is that something that you'll bring to us separately?
No, these would, this would all fall within the same line item for sewer main repairs and will be under budget in that sewer main line item. So the funding is there in that line item, so there will be no budget amendment required.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Again, I'll just go around just to make sure everybody is okay and doesn't have any questions. We'll start with Danny Miller. Any questions on this modification?
Dan Mitchell here. I don't, I don't see the need to change it over like this since we're going to do one for the other, so it doesn't matter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And sorry about the name, sir. Amber Hess, any issues?
Councilwoman Hess here, no questions. It obviously is an emergent need, so it makes sense to switch it.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson?
I just had a couple of questions. So the one that we were going to do was $105,000. And this one's much more. But you said the money is still there?
Yeah, between the $125,000 that's budgeted, our anticipated final cost for the Maple Street project, which was the original CIP Phase Two, it's going to come in under budget by enough to cover this additional cost.
Okay, and then I had one other question. Do we normally pave the alleys when we work on them?
We don't, but this being a high-use alley and one that we have frequent maintenance on, I can tell you that just about every month, I get a call from this particular lady that resides there about the condition of the alley and asking us to come in there and blade it. So we are in there, at least just about monthly. Anytime we go in there to do the elevated maintenance, we're actually excavating holes in the alleyway to access the manholes so that we can get in there to clean them. And then those result in potholes. Even though we fill them back in, anytime you do, traffic just pushes it back out. So that's where we're back in there maintaining it on a more frequent basis.
Okay, so, well, I won't say what I was going to say. So if something happens though underneath with this particular main, then we have to rip it all up, right?
But when we rebuild it, we should have to get in there for 50-plus years.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Okay, yeah, and I guess I was looking at it from a, spend some money now rather than, and get it set up right rather than sending someone in there frequently enough to grade it off. So that was, I guess, my perspective. I feel like that's where engineering was coming from.
Correct.
That's fine.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to move to approve the contract modification as written.
Mayor Protem Johnson, I'll make the motion that we do the contract modification for the 2019 CIP Phase Two project.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
This is Clerk Soight calling role for the motion. Councilmember Hess?
Councilwoman Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor Walagora, aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Clerk Soight. Next up is A is the Community Defense Improvement Program applications submitted.
City engineer Rich Solinger again. On May 15th, 2020, the city was informed of a grant opportunity through the Defense Communities Infrastructure Program, DCIP. This program with $50 million offered nationwide through the Office of Economic Adjustment was established to assist communities located in support of defense communities, funding for infrastructure purposes. The Roosevelt Group and the Matrix Group, working with the Office of Economic Adjustment, assisted in developing the competitive applications. This came about really quickly. Found out about it and I had to make a quick decision as far as projects to consider pursuing. And with some quick meetings with Rachel, myself, staff, we were able to target this project. The program has several requirements which must be met to be considered eligible for submittal. The project must enhance the military value, resiliency, and military family quality of life. There were city-reviewed options and elected to propose the replacement of the clearwells at the water production plant. The existing clearwells are of 1922 and 1935 vintage and had extensive repairs completed in 2007. With these expected repairs to have, or these repairs to have an expected useful life of 15 to 20 years. The estimated cost to replace these existing 500,000 gallon tanks with two new 750,000 gallon tanks. Right now, it is still in flux. But the initial cost that we had thrown out there when we put this original package together and discussed it was about $6.25 million. Since that time, we've been able to reduce it somewhere. It could be between $3.25 and $4.25 million. Those numbers are still getting refined. After several web conferences and discussion, the consultants working on behalf of the Office of Economic Adjustment felt that the city's project was an ideal candidate for the grant and requested we prepare a full preliminary outline for submission. The consultants will take the information we provide, make minor modifications to ensure compliance with the requirements, and submit these to the Pentagon for full review. If we are deemed a successful project, we would be notified in August and then be required to submit a full application in September. If ultimately funded, the project would be, if ultimately funded, the project would be available by the end of the year and must break ground within 12 months. Excuse me. The city is working with a consultant to prepare certain elements of the application that must be prepared by a third party. Third party independent entity. I'm sorry, my phone is going nuts here. The city is working with a consultant to prepare certain elements of the application that must be prepared by a third party independent entity. With an application deadline of June 26, 2020, we must accelerate our documentation for the submittal. As part of the submittal, the city must provide documentation that whoever signs the application is authorized on behalf of the governing body to sign and submit on behalf of the city. Thus, we will need a motion stating Rachel Smolinski is authorized with the Alpena Municipal Council to submit a proposal for funding through the Office of Economic Adjustment Community Defense Infrastructure Program on behalf of the city of Alpena. The signatory shall also have the authority to apply for assistance through this program. The cost for this program, while we're still being determined at this time, but the preliminary estimate was about $6.235 million. The city would be providing a 20% match for $1,247,000. Like I said, we have been able to reduce that. We are working with a partnership between Huron Engineering and Hubble Roth and Clark right now to assist in putting together four answering four of the questions within the application. One of those being the cost estimate, another one being the timeline for environmental reports, environmental filings. This project, the replacement of the clear wells, is one the city will have to undertake in the next seven to 10 years based on the condition and previously worked performed at the tanks. Through this opportunity, the same, the city may be able to fulfill this need at a portion of the cost. And we were, when they went through this Roosevelt Group and the Matrix Group, we had a follow up conference call, which Mike Mahler is kind of the lead in those communications. The city of Alpena's project was their number one ranking as far as quality of applications for the state of Michigan. So I think we have a pretty decent shot at it. There's nothing guaranteed, but I think we're, we've got a pretty good chance.
Excellent. Thank you, Rich. I've got a couple of questions and then I'll go around council and give them priority as well. My first question is, do you have any sense of knowing what the cost will be for the consultants that are providing the assistance just to apply?
Right now, we have a purchase order that we issued for not to exceed $9,800, which is below the threshold for the purchasing policy. And so they've given us their hourly billing rate that we are working under. So that is a max that we have allocated for this.
Okay, and you feel that that'll be enough for the fees that they'll probably be looking for?
Yeah, for this preliminary portion. When I talked to them, I indicated that that was our limit that we needed to stay below it. They had no problems with that.
Okay, my other question is the 20% match, is that the requirement for the grant itself?
No, actually, because we are a rural community, our match could go down to zero. If you're not a rural community, you're required to have a 50% match. But because we are rural, we had the ability to go down to zero. But with matching funds, we would stand a better chance if we make it to the full give it in competition with the rest of the nation for this funding.
Okay, so it was a competitive advantage decision then?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had. Well, just one other quick. Up towards the beginning of your memo, when you talked about the extensive repairs completed to the clear wells in 2007, did they? I remember, and I wasn't elected, I didn't start until January of 2012, and I remember this being on our some maintenance at that time. Was that because it was several years worth of maintenance? So it started in 2007 and then came back in like 2012 or later?
It was a multi-year project to get in there and seal them. Basically, the tanks had cracks and we were having water loss through those tanks. And we also had some repairs to the hatches that accessed them from the ground level that had to be done. And I know the contractor was in there for two or three years at various times when we could take the tanks down and have them down for an extended period to try to seal that. You know, the comment at that time by the contractor was that he was using four to five times the volume of sealant material in our tank than he had in any other tank he'd ever done. So we know that we had some pretty extensive cracking in there. Being 1922 to 1935 vintage, there aren't many options to try to rehabilitate those tanks. We've looked into them as far as putting some type of lining in there. But with the structural integrity with the cracking, there's not a lot that we can do short of a full blown replacement. That was actually the recommendation of the contractor who was in here performing those maintenance activities at that time.
Okay, and that full replacement you're saying would probably be or is on the CIP somewhere seven to 10 years out?
It was in our long range CIP.
Okay. Yeah, that's all the questions that I have. My biggest concern is, is I guess the match. Somewhere there's, somewhere I'm sure that there is a balance and unknown balance between what match would put us at a good competitive range and one that's the most affordable. So I guess I partially questioned 20% if we thought maybe 10% would work because we are rural. But you certainly have contact with the consultants that are a lot closer to this grant process than I am. So I'll leave that decision to you, but that's by far my biggest concern, I guess.
As I indicated, Mike Mahler has been kind of the go between on this. And I know when this originally started, Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think he was pushing for us to be upwards of the 50% to try to make sure that we got a project. And there's just no way that we could swing that. As it was, we're going to be hitting our fund balance pretty hard. But we've sat down with Anna and Rachel and discussed it, looked at what the impact's going to be. And it is doable even at that 1.25 million. Now, as the overall project comes down, that percentage or that cost of that 20% will come down as well. We may be, if we get down to $4 million, that's going to drop down to about $800,000.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, we just think this is too good of an opportunity for us to pass up for something that's going to need, you know, maintenance within the next 10 or, excuse me, replacement within the next 10 years. And just the feedback that we've gotten about how our project has scored is, you know, our incentive to move forward with this. And Rich has put a lot of work into this and there's a lot more to go, so I appreciate those efforts on his part.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I think it's a great opportunity. I would agree. So I really don't have any issues with the application process as far as I've seen it so far. So I'll go around again just to get any issues or questions out. Danny Mitchell, any questions, sir?
Mitchell here. Replacement of these tanks, are we going to remain with concrete or are we going to go with some other material for a longer life?
No, what we're looking at is precast, pre-stressed concrete tanks. You know, these were poured, you know, in 1922, 1935. I think the second section was done under the WPA program back at that time. Quality control probably wasn't as stringent as it probably should have been back then. And that's what we're seeing now. I mean, they, you know, they're 100 years old. The tanks have held up pretty well, but so we're going to stick with the concrete. That's probably the best product to have.
I assume that figured into this cost is also the replacement of the older pumps and valves. Some of the valves which are, the way I was told, were non-functioning.
Yeah, this will be all, this will all be bowled and pumped into the high service pump station independently. But we are working on replacing some of those other valves in there right now.
Well, I was privileged to have a good walk through, I think it was in February, and saw the conditions of these things and how hard they're working to maintain them. So if this will take care of it a lot sooner than seven to 10 years, I would say we go towards it.
Okay, thank you, Danny. Amber Hess, any issues, questions?
Councilwoman Hess here. I just had a few questions, but they have already been covered when you asked your question. So I don't have no new questions. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Johnson here. I just had one question, Rich. How many 500,000 gallon tanks do we have?
Right now, there's two of them. There's basically the big square berm behind the plant that you see contains two 500,000 gallon tanks. There's actually one tank that has a dividing wall between them.
Right.
So what we would be looking at is two two new cylindrical 750,000 gallon tanks to give us additional reserve capacities.
Okay, so they go down, not out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I believe from your memo, the motion that we need is to approve Rachel Smolinski is authorized by the Alpena Municipal Council to submit a proposal for funding through the Office of Economic Adjustment Community Defense Infrastructure Program on behalf of the city of Alpena. The signatory shall also have authority to apply for assistance through this program.
Correct.
And that's all we need for what you're doing?
Correct. That's just basically the authorization for Rachel to sign on behalf of the city to pursue this grant opportunity. And then if we're selected in September or August, then we would be able to sign that at that time as well.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson here. I move that we allow Rachel to be the author of the signature for the Alpena Municipal City Council to submit a proposal for funding through the Office of Economic Adjustments Community Defense Infrastructure Program on behalf of the city of Alpena and also be able to apply for assistance through this program.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
Clerk Soick calling rule for the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor Walagora, aye.
And Councilmember Hess?
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you all very much. And Councilman Noah isn't here and he always makes the final motion. So I'll have to leave that up to the first one to check in and do that for us.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, I move we adjourn.
Councilwoman Hess, second.
We are adjourned.
All right, thank you very much. Talk to you soon.